Good afternoon. The hour of 1:30 having arrived, we will call the meeting to order. I understand I need to refer to Linda for the ground rules. Got public comment. So we're going to do that now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, before we begin today's meeting, I wanted to remind all that First 5 LA is operating under AB 2449, which provides updated teleconferencing rules allowing for a hybrid model of physical and remote attendance for members of our board under certain specified circumstances. And as a threshold matter, AB 2449 requires that at least a quorum of members of our board may participate in person from a single physical public location clearly identified on the agenda. If the physical attendance requirement is met, AB 2449 permits a board member to join a board meeting virtually without having to notice their location under two circumstances. The first is for just cause and the second is due to emergency circumstances. And both just cause and emergency circumstances are defined under the statute. Regarding public comments, remote attendees can submit public comments in two ways. The first way is written public comments must be submitted in advance of the meeting via email to LVO@first5la.org by 1:30 PM the day of the meeting in order for them to be read aloud during the meeting. As a reminder, public comments emailed should indicate the item number, the comment. Any public comments received after 1:30 PM will become a part of public records. And during the meeting, a reminder to public members that they can use the Q and A chat function to express an interest in speaking to an item. It is important that the request to speak be submitted via the Q and A chat box before the item being commented on is presented. And when submitting requests to speak, public members are asked to only provide his or her name and the item number the comment corresponds with. All public comments received during the meeting via the Q and A chat will be addressed in the order they are received. When you do hear your name being called, you are allotted two minutes per public comment and we will call your name twice before moving on to the next one. For all in-person public comments, all speakers are asked to complete a public comment form in the lobby in order for them to be addressed during the meeting and they should be submitted prior to the item as being presented on. You will also be given two minutes per comment and we ask that you step up to this podium right here to do your public comment. Finally, with the exception of adjournment, which will be called for by the chair, all action items will include a roll call. And a quick note to all public and board members, if you do receive, if you did receive a copy of our board materials for today, we acknowledge that they are very voluminous. If you would like to have them recycled, please feel free to drop them off at the front desk before you leave and we'll ensure that those are recycled. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll hand this back to you.
Thank you so much. And can you clarify for me if we have any commissioners who are requesting approval to participate remotely?
Confirming that we don't have any commissioners who would like to participate remotely today.
Excellent. Well, then can we go ahead and call the roll?
Judy Abdo. Debbie Allen.
Here.
Robert Byrd.
Here.
Victor Manalo.
Present.
Astrid Hager.
Here.
Summer McBride.
Here.
Brandon Nichols.
Here.
Carol Segala.
Here.
And Holly Mitchell.
Present.
Quorum is present.
Thank you and good afternoon, everybody. Welcome. We're going to proceed on to the report out on closed session of the Executive Committee for today, May 4.
Yes, Chair, thank you. Earlier today, the Executive Committee met, but there's no reportable action from that meeting.
Excellent. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is consent. Is there any board member who wishes to pull an item off of consent? Seeing none, so we transition to public comment on the consent agenda.
Confirming there are no public comments on the consent agenda.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Do we require a second?
Yes.
Yes, second?
A second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Please call roll.
Judy Abdo.
Yes.
Robert Byrd.
Yes.
Astrid Hager.
Yes.
Victor Manalo.
Yes.
Summer McBride.
Yes.
Brandon Nichols.
Yes.
Marcella Ramirez.
Yes.
Carol Segala.
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to remarks from the chair. First of all, I want to introduce to those who haven't met her and acknowledge my new appointee, Summer McBride. Thank you so much for agreeing to take on this task of leading LA County as we focus on our zero to five, our most important constituency group. I appreciate you. Commissioner McBride is a certified parenting instructor, full-time spectrum doula. You know, that's my retirement plan to be a doula, right? That's my retirement plan. And a trained facilitator of centering pregnancy through the Charles Drew University Black Maternal Health Center of Excellence. She's also the CEO of The Village Legacy, a local nonprofit focused on providing affordable and culturally responsive parenting classes, particularly focusing on the population who are court ordered to have parenting classes. She serves as faculty with I Dream for Racial Health Equity and as a co-chair on the LA County African American Infant and Maternal Mortality Community Action Team. Through the community action team, she is editor of the Richardson Quarterly Publications, featuring birth stories and resources to inform and educate birthing people to improve birth outcomes. She, when we first met, she was serving as a trustee on the Culver City School Board where she served for six years. During her tenure there, she successfully advocated for the district to form an Equity Advisory Council and in 2020 during her term as board president unanimously passed their first ever Equity Strategic Plan. She currently serves on various committees within the city of Culver City and recently joined the staff in Culver City USD as a supervisor and serves as a union steward. She has a BA in social psychology from Southern New Hampshire University. And most importantly from my perspective, she is the mother to five boys. And as the mother to one boy, I hold her in very high regard. Because I try to give him away on a regular basis and he's an adult and all of hers are school age. Please join me in welcoming Commissioner McBride. Really want to express, given all that's on your plate, I want to thank you for accepting the call and your service here. I know you'll be a phenomenal addition and I really appreciate you being here. Thank you, thank you. I think since we all last convened, the public health order came to an end and more and more organizations, including my own, have welcomed their workforce back to the office. We heard about what is still allowed under AB 2499 and we don't know quite frankly how much longer. Maybe we do know. I guess it's when the state ends their order. How long will continue to have the privilege of having a hybrid system? I'm hoping the legislature creates a permanent hybrid option just because I think it creates opportunity for the public to, you know, engage more. But we'll see what our state legislature does. But I'd like to thank First 5 LA staff for your willingness to be flexible and for your hard work during the darkest days of the pandemic. As an organization, you were tasked with some very important work and it's important that we acknowledge that and I appreciate your willingness to continue to be flexible and really understand the values. We were just talking about having staff in person in terms of, you know, creating the culture, particularly with a new leader and particularly with the work we have ahead of us, which will very likely be new and different. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank the staff for their flexibility and their commitment to continue to serve. With that, any questions of me? I don't have to take public comment on the chair's report, do I? I do. Any public comment on the chair's report?
Confirming there are no public comments on the chair's report.
Thank you. We'll transition to item six, which is the Executive Director's Report.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners, staff and members of the public. I have had the privilege of serving as Executive Director for about 120 days now. And yes, very, very thrilled. Thank you. And the reason for sharing that is to share that there has been some really, really critical priorities for all of us at First 5 LA and the Commission. First and foremost, the fiscal reality is a component that has driven a lot of our conversations. Secondly, engagement with our team, First 5 LA team, the board and external partners has been really, really critical to inform some of our learnings. And then most importantly, we are going to have a lot of discussions on the strategic reset. So there's been a lot of internal dialogue about the process. The primary focus for today is really going to be our budget. And it is to really inform the fiscal reality that many of us learned about in November. And this team has really focused, November of last year, and the team has really focused on addressing some of that. There's three pieces that I really want to highlight here and the team in front of us will go into this more. In order to address this fiscal reality, we wanted to make sure that the budget we present to you Commissioners is targeting below the long-term financial plan that many of you have seen. So that was one of our deepest priorities to make sure that we're dealing with the fiscal reality. The second piece that we really want to highlight is this budget reflects increases in strategic partnerships with our county. And we're really, really excited about sharing some of that information with you. Most importantly, this work cannot and would not have been done without the whole First 5 LA team stepping up and saying, yes, we're going to deal with this reality. And most importantly, would not have been done without our finance team. So I really want to take this time to recognize our team. Daisy Lopez, Raoul Ortega, not at the podium is George Demerchan, that we want to make sure are recognized under the leadership of JR. So thank you for all the work that you've done in the last few months. And when you see the presentation, you will see why that gratitude is really important to begin with. The second piece I really want to highlight for the group here is the importance of engagement. This Commission has been really, really clear that strategic partnerships matter and aligned partnerships matter with our external partners. During this time, we've been listening to not only our staff and what the Commission is saying, but really paying attention what our external partners are saying and we need to focus on. And that's going to inform our strategic reset. And a few highlights for the strategic reset, you will hear some information from our team shortly in regarding to this. But we have very clearly heard from all of you that our goals and the way we are measuring success will be really important in the strategic reset. And that's a commitment that staff is making and we want to make sure that as we talk about the reset, that will be a focus. Secondly, when you go through a strategic reset, we want to make sure that the reset is aligned to structure and we will be looking at our structure as an organization. And then finally, we want to make sure that the Commission's aware we are looking to bring in consultants that will help us inform our strategic reset that are focused on our goals, objectives and strategies that are focused on communications and our structure. And with that, I see the team ready to put up a slide. One thing we wanted to share with the Commission in regards to the strategic reset is having a really, really clear framework of the discussions you will see come before all of you. Often when we have discussions, we may be looking at objectives, we might be looking at tactics. What we will do in coming back to the board is use this framework to ask the questions in order to inform our strategic plan. The board has been really clear, systems change is a goal that will be a continued focus. If our landscape shows that we should explore other goals, we will. But the systems change goal will not change and want to make sure that's clear here. But in the next coming months, what we will do is share with you and have dialogue in this space about what are critical goals we should look at and the objectives, how we will measure success and strategies. And this framework will help guide our discussions in the upcoming months. Thank you for sharing that. The last thing we want to share with the board is as we venture into a strategic reset, as our chair has shared, collaboration is really, really critical. We all sit here, after the pandemic, we had a lot of offline meetings and conversations. As the board has come back, our staff will also be coming back into the building two days a week and starting in July. A few things to elevate there. Our team is sitting in the back. I want to congratulate our human resources and talent management team. Board, this team connected with all our team members to figure out what our policy should be. So a special thank you to Gala Collins, if you're back there. And and Zoila Cruz and Monica Yol did everything to make sure that our staff input in regards to the hybrid policy was considered and they finalized it in April. As we move forward, you will see some upgrades in the building in order to welcome back staff. You already saw the beginnings of trying to add more community pictures and we will be giving you updates on that. With that, just want to say really, really exciting opportunity, very excited to see what we do together in the upcoming months and very grateful for this partnership. So turning it back to you.
Thank you. Quick question before I see if Commissioners have any questions. The pyramid, yes. At what point are you expecting the Commission to engage again? I know that we had our great session where we did our breakout groups, but what should the Commission expect in terms of our participation?
Yep. And that will be covered in the presentation as we go through it. But it will start as early as June for process and then questions will come July and August in regards to the framework.
Okay. And second quick question, is the board dark in July or do we meet in July?
We do meet in July, but after the July board meeting, we're dark until September.
So you're dark in August?
That is correct.
Okay. I may have confused it with another, I think AQMD is dark in July. Okay, get it together, Holly. All right, we are dark in August. Perfect. Any other questions Commissioners have of Carla? On her report. Seeing none, public comment on the Executive Director's Report.
Confirming there are no public comments on the Executive Director's Report.
Thank you. We'll move directly into the meat of the conversation, which from our perspective is always the budget. So item seven again is an information item on the proposed budget and we'll hand it over to staff for the presentation. Thank you for your work.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As Carla mentioned, we're going to go through the proposed budget and long-term financial plan for fiscal year 2324 that will go for final approval for the next board meeting. We acknowledge that the content that you'll hear today was heard from our Budget and Finance Committee two days ago for that. So some of it is a repeat, but we will, what will be different is we will go a little bit more in detail with an additional presenter. My colleague, John Wagner for this. Like Carla said, this is of key importance because of the fiscal reality. Fiscal reality as a result of Proposition 31, which bans the sale of certain flavored tobacco products, which we presented at the board meeting last February. This proposed budget is, as Carla mentioned, one of many steps to help address the fiscal reality of our declining revenues. As Carla mentioned, congratulating the staff here, this is a product of all teams and offices leaning in to this budget under the leadership again with Raoul, Daisy and George Demerchan for this. Let's review for the objectives for today. We'll give a brief overview about the budget process and also what informed the budget process for this. Then we'll go into the budget highlights, specifically the budget components. We're at a high level, covers the programs and the operating budgets for those. And both of which we'll go into more in detail. As I mentioned earlier, John Wagner, our Executive Vice President, will go more in detail of the program budget and Daisy will go over the operating budget for those. We will also cover what you can see there, the administrative cost limit. This is essentially just a ratio of our administrative costs in relation to our budget for that. We'll also cover our long-term financial plan, which Carla alluded to earlier, which is a forward-looking tool across fiscal years. It is updated today based on our proposed budget, updated actuals that we have and most recent revenue that we receive from the state agencies. So it is updated compared to what was presented last February for that. And then we'll wrap it up with next steps. All right. Regarding the budget process overview, it was developed and informed by two areas. First, development was based on what was spent in the past, what we plan to spend in the future. What are some of the contract obligations that we have that are multi-year? And of course, any new anticipated need that we have in the future. So this is typical, nothing new about how the process was developed for the budget. The second part was, what was unique for this was, as I mentioned earlier, the budget was informed by our accelerated fiscal reality because of Prop 31. If you recall, as Carla alluded to, we do have the established board spending limits attached to those. So we could have used those as targets for the budget, but instead we strive to do by the 10% reduction below that. But just know that it wasn't across the board. There was some thought process that got along into that. So there was a lot of discussion with the staff, with the finance in terms of what program areas, including the operating areas that made sense of where there could be increases, quite honestly, and also decreases to help with the fiscal reality. So now I will pass it over to Raoul for general highlights.
Thank you, JR, and good afternoon Commissioners. Before I start with some general highlights, I want to acknowledge that the proposed budget did go through the Budget and Finance Committee this past Tuesday and under the leadership of our committee chairman, Robert Byrd. We went and we did discuss the overall program budget and the operating budget. And the overall budget was endorsed for us to move forward today. So we are pleased to get their support on our presentation today. As JR highlighted and Carla highlighted in her opening remarks, we are living under a new fiscal reality since Prop 31. It has significantly changed the baseline to our already declining revenues. The impact of this proposition has shined a light on how important our continued focus to long-term sustainability and how critical it is to identify new revenues to support the objectives of the organization. The proposed budget that is before you does reflect a total of $8.3 million of non-Prop 10 funds, which represents 8.23% of the total budget. This lowers the total demand of First 5 LA resources from $99.1 million to roughly $90.8 million. The $8.3 million also reflects a $3 million increase from the $5.3 million projected for this current year in fiscal year 2223. Other highlights that I would like to highlight are with the program work, we're allowing work that was slated to end to end. Program work that was anticipated to ramp down, to ramp down and not invest in any new work until we complete the strategic plan reset process. On the operating side, we align our resources to align to our fiscal reality by taking a critical look on how we look at our entire full-time equivalency, what we call internally the FTE count. And we budget for what we need today to support the work that we aspire to complete for fiscal year 2323. And we budget for what we need today to support the work that we aspire to complete for fiscal year 2324. Now to go into further detail of the budget, I want to acknowledge and pass the baton to Daisy Lopez, our FPA manager. Daisy Lopez, she is our FPA, FPNA manager, who really does the heavy lifting of getting all the information across the organization and putting the budget together along with her staff, George. Daisy?
Thank you, Raul, and good afternoon, commissioners, staff and guests. So moving on to the budget components and how we organize our resources, there were no changes to the budget framework components compared to prior year. So in this framework, we begin with the programmatic resources, which are devoted to the strategic plan activities and organized within the Center for Child and Family Impact and the offices, followed by legacy investments and centralized resources to support our emerging opportunities. We then capture the operating budget resources, which support the cost of our internal operations. So today's presentation will review highlights of each of these components with a focus on the programmatic costs that are proposed for fiscal year 2324. So as you can see illustrated in this table, organized by the various components that I just alluded to, the proposed 2324 budget represents an overall decrease in anticipated spending for the fiscal year of roughly 5.7 million or 5.5% when compared to the revised 2223 budget. This is driven by a net decrease in program spending of roughly 4.3 million and by a decrease of approximately 1.5 million in support of operating costs. So we will examine both components further a little later in today's presentation. Just to note, the approach and development of the overall budget was consistent with the development in previous years as JR and Raul highlighted earlier, aligning to our needs, strategic direction and strategic priorities, and it's also responsive to the guidance, proposing a budget in costs that come 5 to 10% below the 2324 LTFP spending limit in response to the accelerated decline in revenue as a result of proposition 31. So the total proposed cost estimates result in a more streamlined budget, reflective not only of our commitment to live within our means, but of a proactive and responsive understanding of the evolving fiscal environment in which we operate, resulting in declining revenues and a declining fund balance. We will revisit the long-term implications of declining revenues and fund balance later in today's presentation when we discuss the updates to the long-term financial plan. So as previously mentioned, this budget is responsive to ongoing and accelerated declines in revenue, and it continues to emphasize the long-term sustainability. One example of our sustainability measures is the diversification of our funding to support next fiscal year's work. We are having technical difficulties. My apologies, next slide. Thank you. So as Raul mentioned earlier, the 2324 total budget will be offset by approximately 8.3 million in other revenues, reducing the actual estimated net demand of first five LA's resources from 99.1 million to $90.8 million. The 8.3 million in external funding anticipated for 2324 represents an increase of roughly 2.4 million compared to anticipated funding in 2223 and an increase of 4.3 million compared to actual other funding received in fiscal year 2122. So as proposition 10, revenue trends continue on a downward trajectory, first five LA will continue to not only maintain, but amplify its efforts to diversify our revenues and explore other alternative revenue generating sustainability strategies for the future, as well as pursue opportunities to partner and leverage funding from organizations to support the work of the commission and our commitments to the children and families of Los Angeles County. Examples which you can see indicated in the slide include funding and partnerships with First Five California, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, the Los Angeles County Office of Education and the Los Angeles County Department of Mental Health. So one thing that I would like to note is that the DMH funding is contingent on county approvals and that is anticipated to happen after our budget is approved in June. So now let's take a closer look at the proposed resources for fiscal year 2324 and how some of this external funding will be utilized. At this time, I will turn it over to our executive vice president and head of the Center for Child and Family Impact, John Wagner, who will share some of his center's programmatic highlights. John, next slide, please.
Thanks, Daisy. Good afternoon, commissioners. It's great to be here with you and to be able to provide an overview of some of the highlights for the Center and Child and Family Impact budget, including the five teams listed on this slide. First, CCFI or the center has historically been the largest component of our annual budget. The center's 2324 proposed budget is 64.8 million, as you see here, or just over 65% of the total budget. This reflects a 6.4 million or overall 9% decrease from the current fiscal year. Going through some of the highlights of each of the five teams within the center. First, the family supports team, the first row on this, manages and oversees first five LA's largest investment, that being welcome baby select home visitation. The work this team does is the key engine behind our strong partnership with the LA County Department of Public Health and the county's response to multiple board motions by the county board of supervisors calling for the creation of a countywide infrastructure, a voluntary home visiting supports and services for families. The majority of this budget is driven by external contractor staffing costs, which is a significant driver of the budget, as well as inclusion of external funds from first five California to support our work, which also increased the budget from 37 million to the 39 million for next year. Cognizant of our fiscal reality, the team is diligently working on short-term and longer-term efforts to maintain the infrastructure while managing within these fiscal pressures. Examples include the closing of five select home visiting sites with very low caseloads and very low numbers of home visiting staff and therefore resulting in very high administrative costs in 22 and 23 for annual savings of just over 1.1 million dollars. I'll note that the team successfully transitioned all families who wanted to continue to access services to other providers. And this year, we're implementing an adjusted welcome baby staffing structure across providers to reflect the declining birth rate for LA County. And this will result in just over a million dollars in additional savings. I want to acknowledge the significant outside non-Prop 10 resources that are being brought into the organization through this team's efforts in applying for DMH prevention, early intervention funds, decreasing the demands on our resources. If successful, as Daisy mentioned, this would amount to 4.5 million in outside funding for home visiting services in 2324. We want to acknowledge our partners at DMH for this collaboration. In our communities team, which is the second row on this chart, we have a proposed budget of 14.4 million dollars. And we continue to think of our resources in the communities team centered around really two major efforts. First, building the local movements around P to five or prenatal to five, including community, organizing communities around early childhood development issues. And second, building the networks to support this. In the latter category, the largest expenditure of this team budget is the funding of our five regional network grantees or RNGs, whom many of you heard from at the April PPC meeting last week. 12.9 million of this 14.4 million you see in this team budget or 89, roughly 89% goes to funding the RNGs and their work with parents and communities. The decrease from last year represented a decrease of roughly 10% for the RNG contracts. I also want to call out the efforts of our communities team in administering the refugee resettlement contract. As expected, the state grant is ramping down this year. So you'll see a minimal amount of $64,000 in this year's budget, down from the nearly $300,000 from last year, which is further contributing to the decrease of this team's budget. The next is the ECE team budget, which you'll see proposed at 6.2 million. This is a 4.8 million or 44% reduction from the previous year. It's important to call out a few contextual points here. First, within the ECE team budget, a significant investment in kindergarten readiness or KRA is coming to its anticipated end with only two contracts remaining in the 2324 fiscal year. And that accounts for about 2.3 of that 4.8 million dollar reduction. Second, as it has for the last several years, the ECE team has done an exemplary job of tapping into outside revenue, in this case from first five California, for quality improvement work funded by state, what we call state impact dollars. Though these state resources are continuing, which is good news, they are decreasing, accounting for the remaining 2.5 million of this decrease. Our ECE team continues to be engaged in the development of our emerging home-based childcare strategy, including family childcare and family, friends and neighbor care. As we've discussed in many meetings with the board, rethinking how we support these providers is critical to ensuring support for the ECE system. Most of the families and communities we, we serve rely on. Within the ECE budget of, of the 6.2 million, our largest proposed expenditure of first five LA funds support continued development of this home-based childcare strategy at 1.2 million. The latter component includes the finalization and distribution of our landscape analysis on the state of home-based childcare here in Los Angeles County, the building out of partners to help shape our initial thinking on strategies, as well as resourcing some pilots to test out these strategies. And we are cognizant that the development of this strategy must align to the work of our strategic plan reset. Moving on to the health systems team. We've historically been investing through the health systems team in two areas. The first, early identification and intervention for developmental delays via our current approach called Help Me Grow. And our second area, African-American infant and maternity maternal mortality or AIM prevention work, which actually you will hear a little bit more later on in this agenda. Both of these efforts involve many partners, including the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. This year's team budget of 4.7 million is a 1.2 million or 20% reduction from 2223, the largest reduction being tied to the ending of our support of some of the selected components for Help Me Grow. Though originally a five-year commitment to support DPH as our co-lead for Help Me Grow LA, we are extending that commitment for a sixth year, however, at a reduced amount to support Help Me Grow LA through a more regional-based model of resources embedded in the DPH regional structure. And commissioners who were able to attend the PPC meeting last week heard a little bit more about that. The health systems team has been working closely with DPH to finalize this shift and has prioritized sustainability planning over the next year after first five LA funding ends in June of 2024. And the final team to highlight on this page is the center support team. And their budget is coming in at $450,000, a reduction from $600,000 in the current year. The center support team supports the work of the center broadly and supports the organization in critical areas like system partnerships and sustainability. The budget of the center support team funds outside consultant contracts to help inform our approaches and provide some funding to support county priorities. The reduction in this budget is due to the ending of some work, as well as reflective of moving funding for a membership to, membership support to the OGAAP budget. So that concludes my section of this presentation and I'm happy and directors of the center are happy to answer any questions on the specifics of these team budget, budgets, if there are any questions from commissioners.
Commissioner Burr, as chair of budget, any insights, anything you'd like to share with us?
So one of the conversations we had at Tuesday's leveraging partnerships better. And as you heard, there's partnerships with DPH, DMH. And I do think that as we look around here, seeing where our partnerships exist in the county, especially with new funding streams coming and new planning processes beginning, there's probably a role for first five to be at those tables to establish partnerships and ask for support in the work that this agency is doing.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. We'll have to put our thinking cap on about that. Any, any thoughts you have off the?
I do have a few thoughts. Thank you, Madam Chair. At first, I just want to start by thanking the team. Again, the, the presenters, they have a small army behind them. I know a lot of work went into this, but more than that, and I think we heard it in John's discussion, I know that they were very thoughtful in making these decisions. It's hard to think about pulling money back from community. We know it's having impact and how do we do that in ways that minimize any potential impact? I could, I could hear their heart in the presentation. I guess I just want to thank them for being very cautious and very caring and very mission-focused as we make some hard decisions. I mean, that came across to me greatly appreciated. I do want to say that it's still a lot of money and, and it feels a little gloomy when we talk about the challenges we face. Those are the words we use, the challenges. But we still have great opportunities to help kids that need it. And I think as, you know, as we go into our reset and pick those targets, we're still going to be able to hit them really hard and make a big difference. We just need to reframe, you know, our focus and focus on that impact. One thing, I did have a question though. I've been a member of the board before and then I went away for a little bit and I'm back and so I'm just slightly rusty. I know the budget's based on projections of revenue, but I'm unclear on when we get the actual numbers. My understanding is, you know, it goes to first five California and then we find out, you know, subsequent months. When will we really know for sure what revenue looks like for us for this next fiscal year? I know it's kind of technical, but it just helps me.
We'll actually cover that within the long-term financial plan. But all of our updates is based on revenue projections that we received in April of 2023.
Okay.
So they're the most recent projections from CDTFA and DOF, Department of Finance and the California Department of Tax Fees Administration. And those projections do include the implications based on Prop 31, the banning of flavored tobacco products.
Thank you. And then, so my follow-up to that is just a kind of another general comment. I think it's really important as we continue to go through the various budget steps in our cycle and then our reset, that we continue to do it in public forum where the community can understand the realities of what we can and can't do here at first five and where we continue to keep our ears open to hear what the community priorities are for where they think they need us to help them. So I just, I appreciate that we're all here today in front of cameras and I just want to be mindful that we continue to do that as we move forward.
I couldn't agree with you more. Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Yes, I think it's important and, and, and we were sitting here talking about a little bit about the essential importance of focusing a lot of mental health issues and, and trying to find solutions for the zero to five, zero to six-year-old children that often are forgotten or, or missed. Those of us who have five children and probably didn't miss them. But I think it's the idea that, that they're small enough that they can be ignored oftentimes. And as Garrison Keillor said one time, that it is the memories of a happy childhood that produce a productive and, and safe adulthood. And I think sometimes the kids go unnoticed when they're really little. So I, whatever voice we have in terms of advocating for mental health for the zero to five, I think would, would go a long ways. Commissioner Allen?
I can't see you. I'm trying to peek around the.
I, I really want to support that and recognize that a lot of discussion about mental health that we're hearing starts with children in crisis who are older and fails to recognize all of the opportunities that I think are built into the budget we just heard about to do prevention at a much earlier age. And I want to highlight that while, I mean, I think, I think on the one hand, it's right that there's a lot of money. On the other hand, I think. On the other hand, I think, you know, in Tuesday's meeting, we were all very interested in thinking about, are there alternative sources of funding that makes sense? Because First Five, you know, is such an important player on the scene in LA. But having said that, I think there are also phenomenal opportunities in terms of third-party payment, both FFPSA coming through DCFS and ways that Medi-Cal is making more money available for preventive services, and that we really need to be a collective voice for prevention, not just for treatment when we think about mental health and child health more generally. Because I think that's been a missed part of the conversation. So I think, I think the budget that we heard about is really strategic on both of those points, thinking about, you know, how to use the money there is as wisely as possible and how to use it to take advantage of some of those opportunities. So we're very grateful for the support that it affords to our joint efforts.
Thank you. I would add something you said triggered for me. I know last year's budget, it may have been the year before, when the state allocated a good chunk of money for behavioral health services on school sites, and it was routed through health plans. And at the time, I was on the LA Care Board and fully understood how health plans didn't have really the infrastructure in place to spend that money quickly. And so I'm hoping that, you know, perhaps we could help them if they haven't figured it out between then and now. I think we are uniquely positioned here in Los Angeles County. And frankly, I guess, First Five, all over the state, you know, should be looking to those opportunities as well as fostering those relationships with the Medi-Cal plans who got those resources to do that work. So I hope that's on our radar as well. And this may come up in the long term, but I wanted to tell you why I'm thinking about it. You know, making sure that we're looking at whatever new funding opportunities may be on the horizon, either through the state budget deliberations or legislative proposals that are on the horizon, just making sure that your advocacy team are keeping their eye poised for whatever new monies, if any, you know, might be available from the state as well as local. So making sure we're keen on that. Seeing no other hands raised, I know you have the second portion to enlighten us on. I'll kick it back to staff.
So the second component of the programmatic resources in support of the strategic plan is the offices, including the Office of Government Affairs and Public Policy, the Office of Communications, and the Office of Data for Action. The estimated cost for these activities in fiscal year 2324 is roughly 11.3 million. The total fiscal year 2324 budget proposed to advance the activities led by the Office of Government Affairs and Public Policy is approximately $6.6 million, which represents a roughly 2.4 million or 58.1% increase compared to the 2223 revised budget. The proposed budget reflects a full-year implementation of the Early Childhood Policy and Advocacy Fund, which previously was included in CCFI programmatic budgets. You see a budget increase from 2223, which only accounted for three months of grant-making and a full year of fund design and development. The Early Childhood Policy and Advocacy Fund will work to activate policy and practice changes at the local, state, and federal levels that prioritize children ages prenatal to five years old as a special population, build and strengthen the intersections of public systems, and create self-sustaining policy changes. The O-GAP budget also reflects decentralizing of organizational memberships and sponsorships to work in partnership with the Executive Director's Office. Proposed resources will also be used to focus on core government affairs, advocacy, and public policy functions and to develop and catalyze relationships and partnerships with cross-cutting external advocacy partners who collaborate with First Five LA to advance public policy goals and strategic plan imperatives. The total fiscal year 2324 budget to propose to advance the activities led by the Office of Communications is approximately 3.2 million, which represents a roughly $409,000 or 11.4% decrease compared to the 2223 revised budget. This proposed reduction is driven by the Office of Communications' efforts to examine the roles of contracted resources in the context of the office's evolving approach to developing and implementing integrated communications, marketing, and internal communications efforts to support the organization's overall strategic direction. Longer-term considerations include scaling back budget for communications agency resources and instead contracting resources for expertise in project-specific audience-targeting services and consultation for increased precision and impact. Office of Communications' resources will align to the strategic plan reset, achieving greater clarity across audiences to bring urgency to issues and improvements that impact conditions of early childhood development, while building and amplifying First Five LA's brand as an advocate, systems change leader, and trusted source of information. The total budget proposed to advance the activities led by the Office of Data for Action is approximately $1.6 million, which represents a roughly 78,000 or 4.7% decrease compared to the 2223 revised budget. Guided by the strategic plan reset, ODFAs budget will be used to address the need for data to drive systems change and data to measure impact. There are also resources for executing on the plan, which includes continuing data partnerships with the Children's Data Network, WIC, and the LA County Office of the Chief Information Officer. These data partners will be funded to continue providing rich data on families' lived experiences as well as data on the characteristics of our target population and the public systems that serve them. So we will take a pause here to see if there are any questions related to the work that the offices are proposing for next fiscal year. We do have some experts from each of these areas representing each of the offices to answer questions as necessary.
Questions? Okay, see you now.
Turning to our legacy investments. These investments represent investments from previous strategic plans that are phasing out. There is only one remaining legacy investment that's little by little, which is anticipated to fully exhaust its allocation by 2025. The total resources to support this investment in 2324 is just over $2 million. Although there is a $227,000 uptick in costs compared to prior year, this remaining legacy investment continues to ramp down and is anticipated to sunset according to plan, at which time the legacy investments component of the budget framework will be eliminated. We have also included $150,000 in centralized emerging opportunity resources, which provides us with the flexibility to respond to and implement new or emergent opportunities or situations that align with our strategic plan goals, such as supporting the Atlas Early Childhood Fellows, which was a contribution to support creation of the Early Childhood Fellowship Program for $50,000 in fiscal year 2223. In fiscal year 2324, the funding to support this investment is one of the activities that is being centralized within the Office of Government Affairs and Public Policy. The proposed emerging opportunities budget of $150,000 is consistent with previous year's budget and the anticipated need for the coming year. So now moving on to a brief overview of the operating budget. The operating budget was developed in a manner that is consistent with previous years, using historical data and information available to us to inform our estimates. But as mentioned earlier, it was developed also with the guidance to closely examine and revisit proposed spending in response to the accelerated decline in revenue as a result of Proposition 31. So in this table, you can see that the total overall cost is below the 2223 revised budget from 22.2 million in 2223 to a proposed $20.7 million budget in 2324. Our biggest operational investment is and continues to be our staff. The proposed budget to support personnel costs developed in collaboration with the Human Resources and Talent Management Team includes changes to the FTEs highlighted in this slide, which have resulted in a reduction to personnel costs as well as incremental reductions across other line items related to staffing costs. Many of our other costs are consistent with ongoing needs to support the work of the commission with an increase in travel harkening the end of the National Public State of Emergency and a reduction in consultant services indicating the completion of various discrete projects. We will continue to analyze, assess, and make recommendations to ensure that resources are fairly distributed and accessible across the organization. As First Five LA's administrative costs are captured within our internal operations costs, we will now tease out those funds and discuss the proposed administrative costs for fiscal year 2324. So turning to our administrative costs. Of the $20.7 million proposed operational costs, roughly $13.4 million represents our total administrative costs for the year. Our administrative cost policy requires that we adopt an administrative limit each year, but unlike other county commissions, the policy does not specify a maximum percentage for this limit. However, through the long-term financial plan process, a recommendation to establish a 15% cost cap on administrative costs was adopted in 2020. The total of $13.4 million in administrative costs this year represents approximately 13.5% of the total budget, which is below the 15% recommended through the long-term financial plan. The current policy calculation methodology reflects a broad approach to what is considered an administrative cost for First Five LA. We include all costs for administrative teams, including the Executive Director's Office budget, the Office of Communications' operational costs, the Office of Equity Strategy and Learning, as well as all salary benefit costs for the executive vice president, directors, and administrative assistants across the organization. However, in alignment with long-term goals, we will be considering an alternative approach which revisits the administrative cost methodology to determine how much executive and director time is actually spent on administrative functions versus programmatic functions. Any future changes to the administrative cost policy will be presented to the board for review and approval. So before I turn it over to Raul to guide us through an overview of the long-term financial plan and key updates, we will pause again for any questions, comments, or initial thoughts on the budget portion of today's presentation.
Any comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Vice Chair.
Sorry, just one quick question, and I think it's in the details of the materials, but the font's really small and my glasses can't get any thicker. The items that we have frozen that are currently vacant, you know, pending the reset, I was just wondering if they fall equitively sort of across our operation or if they disproportionately land in any particular area that's like particularly suffering, because, you know, they have most of the vacancies versus others. It was hard for me to pull that out of the detail.
So in terms of the FTE, there were numerous conversations with the leads across the organization in order to determine and identify which positions, which of the many vacant positions would be on hold for the upcoming fiscal year and which would be moving forward. So in addition to the 12 that are on hold for next fiscal year, we have two positions that have been identified as, not necessarily priorities, but that may need to be included in next fiscal year's budget. So we included one quarter of the total cost. So we anticipate that those positions will come on board in April of 2024. So they are partially included. But in terms of the positions that have been identified on hold, there were numerous conversations and discussions that went into deciding which positions.
So there was some intentionality to which?
Yes.
The last 12. Well, good luck, guys. Those were whole. Okay.
Now, those 12 positions live across the organization, both on the administrative function and on the program function. They were not targeted.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right, wonderful. So now I will turn it over to Raul, who will guide us through an overview and some of the updates to the long-term financial plan.
Thank you, Daisy. And before we move on, let's, can we give her an applause? I just want to, it's important to highlight staff who really does the heavy lifting within the budget development process. And though it is an organization-wide effort, Daisy does put the entire budget together, including the PowerPoint that's before you. So I just think acknowledgement is important. So moving on to the bigger picture, a long-term financial plan. So let's start with the purpose. The purpose of the long-term financial plan is really to support the financial stewardship role of the First Five LA Commission and the leadership team. It provides a framework to help guide and to prioritize funding decisions for the proposed budget that is before you and for the future. The updated plan also plays a critical role as we reevaluate and prioritize our work during the upcoming strategic planning reset process, which we will hear more from Antoinette and her team in the next item after the break. As part of First Five, as part of the First Five Management Guide, staff is required to update the plan on an annual basis in the context of the proposed fiscal year budget that we just reviewed with you. And in addition, we update our fund balance to the fiscal year 2122 audited financial statements. We update our revenue forecast and the current year revised budget. I will get into greater details further as we move into the presentation when I cover the assumption and the adjustments that were made in updating the plan. But before I move on, I think it is important to know where we have been and where we're at today, especially in the context of Prop 31. The next two slides will illustrate the impact of our revenues over our expenditures prior to Prop 31 and after. So for some, this graph will look familiar. We have referred to this graph as the closing of the fish mouth. For our new commissioner, this graph compares our revenue versus our expenditures at a single moment of time in April of 2022, prior to Prop 31. The solid portion of each of the line represents prior year actuals, its actual activities that happened and incurred and have been audited or actually confirmed. And the dotted part represents projections for the outer year, both for revenue and for our expenditures. The expenditures are aligned to the spending limits that the board approved back in 2020, when we adopted the new, the new long-term financial plan. Starting with the revenue line, you see that our revenues have outpaced expenditures through fiscal year 0708, which allowed the organization to build a healthy fund balance over time. The revenue peaking in fiscal year 0607, and then the overall revenue has steadily declined since with some fluctuation. The steady decline is primarily related to the rate of consumption reducing over time and the birth rate in LA County declining. The fluctuations are primarily due to the enactment of different tobacco control policies aimed at reducing tobacco use, such as Proposition 31. On the expenditure side, the graph reflects the history of the organization establishing itself in the beginning and developing and implementing programs that primarily focused on direct service. The ramp-up in fiscal year 2011, 2012 was a result of one-time investment or projects that the board took in response to prior-year threats made by the governor to sweep 50% of the First Five Commission fund balance to help balance the state budget. So as we were funding our regular programs within our strategic plan and aligned to our strategic plan, we were getting a threat from the governor in order to balance his budget of taking our fund balance. So the board elected to do these one-time projects in order to get our money out the door and to reduce our fund balance. Since fiscal year 2012, 13, the graph does reflect the ongoing effort to align our spending to our revenues. And we have made considerable progress by continuing to spend less resources than what we have originally anticipated to spend through fiscal year 2122. And also reflects our continued focus to long-term sustainability. In April of '22, you see that the mouth of the fish is on a glide path to close, and the gap between the and the gap between the two lines at the end of fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight was projected to be eleven point six million dollars. So that is between the gold line and the orange line. When you're looking at fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that gap of eleven point six million dollars, we use our remaining fund balance, our available fund balance to fill in that gap. So now let's take a look after Prop thirty-one has passed. On this slide, you see the overall impact of Proposition Thirty-One. You see by twenty-three, twenty-four, the gap between our revenues and expenditures are wider. And by the end of twenty-seven, twenty-eight, the gap is now projected to be roughly twenty-four point five million dollars compared to the eleven point six reflected on the prior graph. And though we are still in the glide path to align the mouth and the graph puts additional, put, the graph does show that we are putting additional pressure on our available fund balance moving forward beyond twenty-seven, twenty-eight. We realize by increasing that demand on our available fund balance, we reduce it overall and beyond fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, what we don't see on this graph is the potential fiscal cliff that we may hit if we continue with the exact same spending pattern that we are experiencing and projecting through twenty-seven, twenty-eight. In fact, our total revenue is slated to decline an additional twenty-four point three percent from sixty-five point seven million dollars to an estimated forty-nine million dollars in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So what is the moral of the story? Is that currently we are fiscally sound, but we do need to revisit and prioritize our future spending, including revisiting the established spending limits we established prior to Prop thirty-one. And as we move into the strategic plan reset process, we do need to make both difficult and strategic decisions to align to our new fiscal reality. And as we get further into this strategic plan reset process, we will continue to update the board as we learn more, get more information and to help further recommendations in the context of our long-term financial plan. So now I'd like to move on to some of the assumptions in our, both our long-term financial plan and also move into some of the assumptions that were made. Fidelity, fidelity to the approved ten-year plan through fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we continue to reflect the established spending limits, beginning with fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, with eighty-five percent of the spending allocated to programs and no more than fifteen percent allocated to our administrative cost. This is reflective in the attachment seven C of your board packet. The annual spending rate will continue to decline at a rate of six point four seven percent with the objective of creating a glide path to align the revenues with our expenditures. We continue to base our revenues with the latest projections from the Department of Finance and the California Department of Tax Fees and Administration and update our other revenues based on secured and known revenue sources uh, that we have um, either processed through the commission's board action and/or secured through actual contracts. We also continue to account for a fifty percent reserve based on our total annual budget per our policy. Now moving into actual adjustments. As I said, revenues uh, does, does reflect updated information from CDTFA and DOF. The latest projections were given to us as of April twenty-three, which does account for the impact of Prop thirty-one. We've also updated the other revenues based on actual confirmed and/or partnerships that are pending. And as we've done historically, based on trend of Prop fifty-six backfill, we do continue to do a downward, a one percent downward adjustment against those projections. That is a very conservative approach, but we would rather be more conservative in our forecast so that we don't plan for something that we don't have resources for. Additional adjustments also include adjusting the prior year activities. So for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, we reflect the actual spending of ninety-six point eight million versus the hundred and ten point four estimate that was showing at this time last year. We also adjusted the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three to reflect the mid-year budget revision that the board approved back in January, actually in February, um, at one hundred and four point nine million dollars. And finally, for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four column, we do reflect the proposed budget that is before you that reflects ninety-nine point one million dollars. And with those adjustments in place, combined with the Proposition Thirty-One, we now project by the end of fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, our available fund balance to be approximately eighty-four point six million dollars. That is a downward adjustment of sixteen point four million from the one hundred and one million that we reported in our update in November of twenty-twenty-two. And with that said, we will take questions on the long-term financial plan.
One question I have is on slide nineteen, where you talk about the um, reserve assumes fifty percent of the total budget, beginning with twenty-twenty-one. And you reference that it is in accordance to a board-reviewed and approved resolution. Um, is that, was that purely internal board-driven or is that the average of all commissions?
So when we adopted the twenty-twenty strategic plan, that's when we pivoted from a long-term financial projections to a long-term financial plan. And we evaluated all different components of our um, fun, how to use our fund balance and how to forecast for future fund balance use. With that being said, we did an evaluation of all of the commission's reserve policy. And we saw that reserve policies were really, some of them were really below twenty-five percent. At the time we were at twenty-five percent, which represents roughly a quarter of a year's operations. Um, it was through the discussion that Budget and Finance Committee that we felt like, since we do have a significant amount of fund balance right now, let's put fifty percent aside. So if anything ever does happen that was really huge, that we can at least provide support to our contractors and grantees for up to six months. And that's when the board took action to adopt from a twenty-five percent reserve to a fifty percent reserve.
In your evaluation statewide, anywhere from twenty-five to fifty?
It, it ranges from ninety days to um, a half a year, six.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Next steps? Is that where we're going? Yes.
Yes. Next steps. So we will be sharing the proposed draft twenty-three, twenty-four budget and updates to the LTFP with the Board of Commissioners again when we return to the board for action and formal approval on June eighth. Um, and as indicated in this slide and mentioned previously, we will be returning to the board with a revised approach to our long-term plan and long-term spending sometime next fiscal year um, in conjunction with the strategic plan reset process. Um, so more information will be shared with the board as it becomes available. Um, and again, huge thank you to the staff uh, for all of their work in putting together these estimates for, for the proposed budget and helping us with updates to long-term financial plan, and we thank you for your time and feedback.
Thank you. Uh, any final questions before we come back? June to take action? Any questions? Seeing none, it would be appropriate to open it up for public comment.
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
All right. So it is time for our uh, ten-minute break. We'll do that. We're a little ahead of schedule. Note, note that, Madam Executive Director, we running this train on time. Ahead of schedule two forty-six, it's a ten-minute break. So we will um, come back shortly after three o'clock.
Yes, and commissioners, before you do break, we do ask that you stay in here on the front end so we can do a quick photo of the full commission.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for your patience.
Right. Take our quick picture?
Members of the public and First 5 LA staff. My name is Nicole Jones and I'm a program officer with the Health Systems Team here at First 5 LA. I work closely with the AIM Initiative to support communications, strategic planning, and evaluation. Today, I'm joined by my colleague Ellen Paddock, Program Officer with the Health Systems Team, who also works closely with AIM to support the community action teams, also known as the CATs, Cherish Futures, and the Village Fund. We also have the pleasure to be joined by our partner, Dr. Melissa Franklin, Director of Maternal Child and Adolescent Health at the Department of Public Health, who was one of the founding members of AIM and continues to provide leadership for the initiative. Today, we will be presenting on the African-American Infant and Maternal Mortality Prevention Initiative, also known as AIM, where we will provide you all with an overview of the initiative, our strategic investment in community action teams' backbone, and the Village Fund. which enables us to work within and across systems as an advocate for the needs and perspectives of families and communities, a partner and a collaborator who can galvanize multiple and diverse stakeholders to achieve common goals, and as an architect and bridge builder with a focus on strengthening connections across public systems and between communities and public systems to support the well-being of children and families. To understand the current state of children and families in Los Angeles County and where First 5 LA can potentially have the greatest impact, commissioners underscored the need to look at existing data and hear directly from families. And all of this leads to the strategic plan reset itself. Staff heard clearly from commissioners how important it is to have a clear, concise strategic plan, clear and concise strategic plan with concrete goals and measures of success. And that we engage communities throughout the process and continue a strong emphasis on equity, acknowledging pervasive and harmful practices that have historically impacted the well-being of children, families, and communities. And we really appreciate these insights from commissioners, which will continue to shape our thinking throughout the strategic plan reset. So Kaya is now going to walk through a more streamlined structure for our strategic plan. And this streamlined structure is an example of how commissioner input is being applied. Kaya?
Thank you, Antoinette, and good afternoon, commissioners, members of the public and colleagues. In the next three slides, as Antoinette shared, we're going to provide a brief overview of our strategic plan reset process. So you see here, we want to start first with outlining the changes we anticipate in our current 2020-2028 strategic plan. So what we have here on our slide on our left is the components of our current strategic. As we shared during the March Board of Commissioners meeting, we know that we live in a very different context to when this plan was approved in 2019. Our external context and our fiscal reality, which was shared during our budget presentation earlier, really requires us to reexamine who does First 5 LA need to be in the future for young children and their families in LA County. We recently had an all-team meeting and we asked our colleagues to share the headlines for what that future may look like for First 5 LA and the future of LA County. So here's some examples of those headlines. The first one, "Parents and experts agree: LA County best place to raise kids due to First 5 LA." Second headline, "First 5 LA's strategic focus on community-driven change pays off in a big way for LA County's children and families." And another example, "Community voice is heard and community is part of decision-making in LA County." So as you can hear from these headlines and as you think of your own, we know that in order to realize such a future, we need to evolve with our changing context and our fiscal reality. We need to make strategic choices on who we are, what we will do, and how we will get there. The strategic plan reset process is an opportunity for us, as we shared in March, to make those fundamental changes. And what you see on the right is that really this new strategic framework, which Carla also outlined in her opening remarks, where it's really about defining our goals, objectives, strategies, and tactics, which was our GOES framework that you saw earlier, grounded in our mission, vision, and values. This slide here provides a little bit more details of how we're defining each of these components of this new strategic framework. Our intent is that once we're done with the strategic plan reset, we will have, as Antoinette said, a streamlined strategic plan that is concise, easy to understand, and is informed by community input. And ultimately, our strategic plan will articulate why we exist, which will be through our mission statement, who we are, which will be through our vision and values, what we will do and what success will look like in time-bound targets, which will be through our goals and objectives, and how we will get there, which will be through our strategies and tactics. So our goal is that the strategic framework that we're developing through the reset process really will tell our story of how we're centering children and families so they can thrive in LA County. So we'd like to close with a high-level timeline of what to expect next for strategic plan reset for the next few months. We're currently in the process of conducting a landscape analysis, really examining what are we learning from our external environment? What are we learning about our internal environment, how we're doing our work, and how do we make sure we incorporate community boards throughout this process? We will continue this landscape analysis and bring on a strategic plan consultant later this month with the goal of finalizing design and timeline. So to answer the board chair's question about how do we see the board engage in the framework, we see that throughout the summer and in the fall, really engaging the board in this framework with the plan that will have the strategic framework finalized for board approval in November. We're just waiting for the strategic plan consultant to come on board to talk through, to design how and when that process will look like. So with that brief update, we'll like to close the presentation and hand it back over to the board chair for any questions.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate you outlining the timeframe. Back next, questions from commissioners. Seeing none, public comment on Agenda Item 9, the Strategic Plan Reset?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Kaya Antoinette, thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate you. Colleagues, we'll move on to Item 10. This also is an information item, and it's the African-American Infant and Maternal Mortality Initiative update. Beautiful. Going to turn it over to Nicole Ellen and Dr. Franklin for the update.
Hey. Good afternoon. Can y'all hear me? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Good afternoon, First 5 LA Commissioners, Madam Chair, members of the public and First 5 LA staff. My name is Nicole Jones, and I'm a program officer with the Health Systems Team here at First 5 LA. I work closely with the AIM Initiative to support communications, strategic planning, and evaluation. Today, I'm joined by my colleague Ellen Paddock, Program Officer with the Health Systems Team, who also works closely with AIM to support the Community Action Teams, also known as the CATS, Cherish Futures, and the Village Fund. We also have the pleasure to be joined by our partner, Dr. Melissa Franklin, Director of Maternal Child and Adolescent Health at the Department of Public Health, who was one of the founding members of AIM and continues to provide leadership for the initiative. Today, we will be presenting on the African-American Infant and Maternal Mortality Prevention Initiative, also known as AIM, where we will provide you all with an overview of the initiative, our strategic investment in community action teams' backbone, and the Village Fund. Thank you. Here is our agenda for today. My colleagues and I will provide you with an AIM overview, which will include some background on the initiative, the enduring crises, critical milestones, as well as the structure and evolution of AIM. We will also share some background on the Community Action Teams, the Village Fund, as well as highlights from our outstanding community-centered work. And we will conclude with our formal ask to amend our strategic partnership to continue funding for both the CATS and the Village Fund. And now we'll pass it to our partner, Dr. Franklin, who will provide us with an overview of AIM.
Thank you, and thank you, Nikki. Thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners, members of the public. Welcome to our new ED, and thank you to those who are here from the AIM Initiative, or as I like to say, woo-woo. I'm appreciative of your enduring support and proud present for a host of advocates in this work and for those who have endured infant or maternal loss, traumatic birth experience, or the agony of racism. I myself am a Black woman who has experienced birth disparity, and I also thank the LA County Board of Supervisors, the LA County Department of Public Health, the Los Angeles County African-American Infant Maternal Mortality Prevention Initiative is a coalition of DPH in partnership with First 5 LA and the LA County Departments of Health Services, Mental Health, Community Organizations, Mental and Healthcare Providers, funders, and community members, all the folk, as I say. We are united in one purpose to address the unacceptably high rates of Black infant and maternal deaths countywide and ensure healthy, joyous births for Black families in LA County. Our values, which you see on the screen, are what drive our work. These were designed at our very first planning meeting in collaboration with community-based organizations, Black individuals, allies, county agencies, and First 5 LA, DPH. Of course, that was in 2018 OMG. Addressing the crisis from the perspective of racism as the root cause is our first value, namely that generational, interpersonal, and structural oppression born out of the unique collective experience of Black people in this nation, seeded by the vestiges of slavery, is the source of the physical vulnerability, harm exposed that is exposed by the disparity that exists that Black folks bear across our country and in our county. Commitment to Black women, people, those with lived experience upfront in leading and informing the strategies and its implementation, fostering equity while fighting inequity, grounded in the understanding that as we are doing the work of advancing equity throughout our county, we must maintain a commitment to challenging and stretching our respective systems, organizations, and each other to align with the values we espouse and to do better in how we treat Black folks. Fostering equity while fighting inequity also means acknowledging that Black women of all socioeconomic backgrounds experience the disparity. Viewing our work from a reproductive justice lens and an anti-racism, anti-implicit bias lens, which I want to briefly call out as our commitment to, again, growing and stretching ourselves as organizations as we live in equity principles and our commitment to doing better. We are all pieces of the puzzle, which reflects our value and belief that everyone, every organization in our county has a part to play in addressing birth inequity. And finally, no blame game. This means that our efforts focus on transforming systems, not the behavior of Black folks, not the behavior of a Black person or a Black family, emphasizing with all collaborators and potential partners that disparity in birth outcomes are a result of systemic issues, not in individual women's choices. Next slide. We have here really summarizes both the crisis and its root causes. First, I want to provide a warning. It is important that I note that this presentation contains information regarding infant death, maternal death, racism, and birth trauma. We hold space for those who may be listening, watching, who have had experience with any of these, as many in our work have. You are welcome to take steps to preserve your mental health and well-being, and we hold space for you. In Los Angeles County, Black women birthing people experience a maternal death at four times the rate of any other racial or ethnic group, with the greatest disparity existing between Black and white individuals, and infant mortality at two to three times the rate of any other ethnic group. The premature birth rate disparity is, in fact, similar. These data represent loss experienced by loved ones, real human beings, with lives ahead of them in our communities, children. In the first quarter of this year alone, we've learned of two Black maternal deaths. April Valentine, a Cal State University, Northridge grad, who is going to be a first-time mother, and Bridget Cromer, mother of five, who is planning to become a nurse. Their names have been added to a too-long list of Black women enduring, Black women who have lost their lives, and Black families who have endured loss. Further, we're becoming even more aware of infant deaths and late-term fetal deaths experienced by Black women. Thankfully, due to the widespread network that is AIM, increased awareness, and on-the-ground work of the AIM Community Action Teams, we have become aware of these deaths and able to respond in ways that simply did not exist before. In fact, we are mid-designing a crisis and compassion response protocol at both the county-wide and community action team level. These data points are in unfortunate alignment with those called out by a recently released CDC report indicating that Black birthing people died at a notably higher rate than any other race from 2018 to 2020. This is consistent across every SPA in LA County, amplified by continuing emerging data around weathering, the effects of racism, and the vestiges of racism. Next slide. We call the graphic on the right, well, we used to call it the AIM Circle, then it became the AIM Flower, and now it's the AIM Garden. It really reflects the shape of our collective work together. As I mentioned, the widespread AIM network. Well, what you see here is an example of that or exemplifies that. The Steering Committee, which is a place of solidarity, representation of various collaborative bodies, and connection that is that circle in the center. It is made of community-based organizations, sector leaders, and public agencies in endeavors to maintain a 51% community-based organization makeup and a 51% at minimum of Black individuals. It's important to note that the Steering Committee is not a central governing body, nor does it have a hierarchical relationship to the other bodies called out here. There are also the Dula Advisory Committee, Cherish Futures, which is our hospital quality improvement collaborative, and four Community Action Teams, who are a heart and soul and eyes and ears of our work, bringing on the ground, community-centered, and specific strategies, as well as guiding the department's efforts. Some points on our approach, again, informed by our values, we stand upon being a collaborative of collaboratives, shared power and decision-making, and engagement driven by community partners. With all these intricate, formal, and informal connections joined by a shared vision, funding similarly has been braided through a funding structure that both braids and blends. We get in where we fit in in terms of seeking funding support and making it work on behalf of our partners. Next slide. Speaking of standing upon, the framework informing the Department of Public Health's efforts is shown here. Note, it says infant mortality. This is because the Center for Health Equity's Action Plan for Addressing AIM initially focused on infant mortality disparity. Maternal mortality was added with the advocacy of the Community Action Team at that time, which was South LA, South Bay, and other partners who called out the importance of acknowledging the connection between health of infants and the health of their mothers, birthing persons. I hear Adjwa Jones in my ears right now who called that out. Are you in the house? Okay, I think she's in the house. Okay, that's great. But that said, the strategies are as follows. One, reduce women's exposure to stressors in the social environment. It is also important to note that by stress, I just want to be clear, we mean the trauma of racism in all of its forms and the physiological tone that presents itself in disparate birth outcomes and is informed and evidenced by research on weathering. Two, block the pathway from social stress to physiological stress. Three, intervene as early as possible if and when stress has taken a toll on health. And four, create infrastructure required to achieve 1 through 3. The Community Action Teams in a lot of ways fit squarely in strategy 4, but definitely influence all three of the other strategies. And with that, I'd like to pass the mic to my colleague, Nikki Jones.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. The UCLA Center for Health Policy is leading AIM evaluation, and they are tasked first to document the AIM organization processes, interventions, and activities. Secondly, they are tasked to track stakeholder and community engagement. And lastly, assess the impact of outcomes on AIM interventions. We are considering both health and behavioral health outcomes, such as the number of successful births, knowledge, beliefs, and behaviors of participants. Our research questions focus on the AIM infrastructure, implementation success, and sustainability. For AIM infrastructure, we are asking, did AIM develop the infrastructure needed for successful implementation? For example, how successful were the components such as funding, programs, and stakeholder buy-in? For AIM implementation success, we are asking, was the AIM initiative successfully implemented, and what were some of the challenges and lessons learned? And did AIM implementation lead to the desired outcomes at the community, provider, and individual levels? We are also measuring outcomes such as Black infant mortality and stress reduction among Black birthing women and people. And lastly, for AIM sustainability, we are looking at what aspects of AIM are sustainable and what factors would improve overall sustainability of the workforce of the initiative. And as you can see here on the slide, our evaluation team just concluded data collection in April, and in June, UCLA will produce our AIM evaluation report. UCLA uses both quantitative and qualitative data collection methods. Our quantitative methods include tracking, such as the provision of doulas, the number of successful births, and attendance to services and events. Qualitative methods include conducting interviews with the AIM Steering Committee, the Community Action Teams on feelings of interconnectedness, knowledge building, and stress reduction. Additionally, our evaluation teams' work closely intersects with our AIM strategic planning efforts through data collection and coordination. Both teams work closely together to interview community in order to reduce survey fatigue, which we know is a common issue in our communities. Also, please note that some of these AIM programs do have separate evaluation efforts that feed into the overall AIM evaluation, which is led by UCLA. But go further into specific programmatic nuances, and these programs are Cherish Futures, whose evaluation is funded by the California Healthcare Foundation, and the Village Fund, whose evaluation is funded by the LA Partnership. The following are some critical milestones from First 5 LA investments in AIM projects and activities. First, we have Cherish Futures for Black Moms and Babies, which is a program focused on hospital quality improvement. And with this program, we will have eight hospital implementation plans that will be completed by December 2023, which includes interventions on four levels: clinical, institutional, community, and data. And these include changes in clinical protocols, embedding community voice, staff training, and routine review of disaggregated data. Examples of patient outcomes that hospitals are focused on improving include hypertension, such as standardization of hypertension treatment protocols, as well as breastfeeding, which include offering consistent and culturally relevant breastfeeding supports. Additionally, participating hospitals will be engaged in an internal reflection process with the community members that have lived experience. And outcomes for Black Moms and Babies will be informed by each hospital's disaggregated birth data in order to better capture emerging themes. And lastly, through our AIM communications work, we have had the launch of the Be the Village Campaign and Dear Baby videos, which I'm sitting next to the mastermind behind those projects, Dr. Franklin. And these projects really celebrate activating one's village of mentors, of doulas, and other support systems. We have also celebrated community through annual campaigns, such as Black Maternal Health Week, which just passed in April, and other cultural health moments, including Breastfeeding Month. Through our communications work, we center joy and the possibility of a positive birth experience while still advocating to fight the injustices that we continue to see. We've had many learnings along the course of this AIM initiative journey. First, we have learned that five years is not enough to uproot 400 years of systemic racism and brutalization of Black women's bodies. As funders, we need to challenge ourselves to shift our thinking from viewing AIM as a five-year initiative to a movement. A movement to disrupt racism through centering joy and safety for Black women and birthing people. Because according to the CDC, the pandemic worsened maternal mortality rates for everyone, particularly Black women. And so our commitment to the work must continue. Secondly, in order to continue to strengthen our community voices, strategic planning will inform our AIM restructure, which will help continue to balance power dynamics between county and community. And as ongoing connection and co-ownership with community is essential, especially with the CATS and the Village Fund, and you'll hear more about that from my colleague Ellen today. So here are some emerging opportunities on the horizon for AIM. Please note that First 5 LA does not currently fund all of these emerging opportunities. So currently, our partner, DPH, plans to create a doula hub, which is a service that will provide support to doulas such as continued training, learning, and assistance with billing Medi-Cal in response to the board motion. DPH also plans to pilot a Guaranteed Basic Income Program, GBI, which is a monthly stipend for pregnant women and people from communities disproportionately experiencing adverse birth outcomes. In the area of policy and advocacy, DPH is also forming a motherboard, which I think is so cool, I love that name, which is a group of community members with lived experience, paid to advise AIM Policy and Advocacy Group and DPH. In the systems integration area, First 5 LA and DPH are looking at ways to better integrate AIM, Help Me Grow, and Home Visiting through centering equity, relationship and trust-building with community, and implementing accountability for providers and improving referral pathways. Additionally, we are looking at ways to better align support for CATS and Best Start communities' priorities. And lastly, First 5 LA and DPH are also seeking to strengthen healthcare system advocacy and quality through our Cherish Futures program, which is pursuing a robust statewide birth equity hospital designation and is strengthening local healthcare quality improvement advocacy efforts. And with that, I'll pass it to my colleague Ellen, who will share more highlights from our Community Action Teams and Village Fund.
Thank you, Nikki, Dr. Franklin, and commissioners, and welcome Commissioner McBride, a member of the original Community Action Team. I'll now share more about our strategic partnership with the LA Partnership for Early Childhood Investment, which we bring to the board today. This partnership supports two main areas of work, the AIM Community Action Teams and the Village Fund or Community Grant Making. To write a quick overview, the AIM Community Action Teams, sometimes called CATS, are regional collaboratives co-led by community and the Department of Public Health. They engage community on countywide AIM goals, as well as developing and implementing their own regional strategies. Currently, there are four CATS operating in the Antelope Valley, South LA and South Bay, San Fernando and Santa Clarita Valleys, and the San Gabriel Valley. The Village Fund or Community Grant Making seeks to invest in community-driven innovative strategies to support Black and African-American birthing families. These are smaller grants ranging from $5,500 to $33,000. And as part of its work, LA Partnership also supports grantees through capacity building and organizational development opportunities. First 5 LA's investment with the AIM Innovation Fund started in 2020 as a three-year strategic partnership with the California Community Foundation, who serves as fiscal sponsor for the LA Partnership for Early Childhood Investment, or LA Partnership for short. Under this strategic partnership, First 5 LA contributes to the AIM Innovation Fund, a pooled fund with many other public and private funders, to support both the Community Action Teams' capacity building and advocacy and the Village Fund. Last June, the board approved additional funding for CATS backbone support, which I'll share more about shortly. But first, to briefly share more about how these two initiatives fit into the larger AIM framework. As a systems change initiative, AIM seeks to impact birth equity on many levels, from state and local policy change to hospital system improvements. AIM Community Action Teams and the Village Fund focused on impact at the community level by strengthening localized networks of support for Black birthing families and by building community and collective action capacity among neighbors, similarly to our Best Start colleagues. and by building community and collective action capacity among neighbors, similarly to our Best Start colleagues. Within the context of the larger AIM framework, the Community Action Teams and Village Fund also ensure that when AIM describes their core values of Black women upfront and leading, they're talking not just about a small group of individuals, but a much larger community of Black birthing families from across LA County who regularly engage with AIM and provide input on its work. All right, jumping now to some of the milestones that the CATS have achieved. I'll first focus on Backbone, which First Five LA began funding, as I mentioned, last year. As a reminder, Backbone Support refers to investment in a community-based organization or individual to coordinate the CAT work. It provides seed funding for the CATS to develop core infrastructure and get their legs under them. Since last June, all four CATS have now onboarded Backbone's organizations or strengthened support to existing Backbones, with the two newest starting in January 2023. With the onboarding of Backbone Support, we have already seen increased momentum in core infrastructure building and sustainability activities, including participation in both countywide and regional AIM strategic planning, fundraising and development, such as through the establishment of funding work groups applying for grants and funder engagement, and data evaluation to better track the CATS' impact, including supporting the UCLA AIM Evaluation. Many of these organizational infrastructure building and sustainability efforts are ongoing, with key milestones expected in summer 2023 and beyond. Just a few examples, AIM Strategic Planning is currently expected to be completed in June 2023 with a real kind of digesting and implementation of that plan moving into next fiscal year. And similarly, the, the AIM Evaluation Results, as Nikki mentioned, are forthcoming in June 2023, which will provide a tool for the CATS to better communicate their work, the impact of their work, build on their learnings, and continue to grow their impact. Fundraising and development efforts are also ongoing, including grant applications submitted this spring. However, more time is needed for these efforts to bear fruit. At the same time, as CATS are building their internal infrastructure, they're also continuing to connect directly with Black families and service providers in the regions where they operate, building movement and engagement around AIM's goals in the process. This includes building awareness, momentum, and community through regular public community action team meetings that focus on perinatal health topics and offer provider-community conversations, as well as community events which engage a broader audience and help strengthen birth justice community in each region. They, in many cases, are also providing direct outreach and supports for Black birthing families, such as through maternal mental health, prenatal, and fatherhood support groups, connection to culturally relevant resources, supporting a mom through an extended NICU stay, and supporting families in the case of tragic birth outcomes, as in the recent cases of April Valentine and Mrs. Bridget Cromer, whose stories Dr. Franklin briefly shared earlier. Collectively, these efforts are helping to expand AIM's reach, with 1,628 individuals participating in CATS events and 5,454 total in the CATS network in fiscal year 2122. Additionally, CATS have begun to receive external recognition, including a 2022 Achievement Award from the National Association of Counties. So in addition to these overall milestones, each Community Action Team also has regional priorities and achievements, which I'll highlight just a few, and these really barely scratched the surface. But in the Antelope Valley, they focused on strengthening and better supporting the Black birth workforce in the region after identifying that a lack of Black birth workers, including OB-gyns, doulas, midwives, and other specialists was a major barrier to care for many families in that region. Key milestones to date include completing a workforce field analysis in partnership with Charles Drew University Center for Black Maternal Health Excellence, which provided specific strategy recommendations and goals for workforce expansion. Additionally, later this year, they'll be opening a maternity home, also in partnership with Charles Drew University, as well as the City of Lancaster, to provide a hub for Black families to access holistic perinatal support services, as well as find community with other Black families and providers. In South LA and South Bay, the earliest Community Action Team to launch, they opened a similar maternity home in 2021, also in partnership with Charles Drew University, which continues operating today. They've also focused on strengthening advocacy for Black birthing families through partnerships with community hospitals, midwives, doulas, and other partners, and have led the way in building crisis response capacity in the event that a worse outcome occurs and a mom dies, helping to mobilize both a community and system response, as well as providing direct support to the families. To date, Slasby has provided this support on its own with limited external resources. However, the Community Action Teams have applied for emergency preparedness grants from the Department of Mental Health. And as Dr. Franklin mentioned, both AIM overall and the CATS are working to strengthen this crisis response capacity. San Gabriel Valley has focused primarily on maternal, on maternal mental health, launching a support group for Black moms in partnership with Therapeutic Play Foundation, as well as partnering with county supervisors in the Department of Mental Health to strengthen regional supports for Black maternal health in the region. And last but not least, San Fernando and Santa Clarita Valleys launched a prenatal support group called Black Mama's Glowing in partnership with I Dream for Racial Equity, and are currently developing a process to gather broader input, community input on regional priorities to ensure that their work is grounded in community going forward. So we've, we've learned a lot from the Community Action Teams, but just to highlight some of the biggest, the biggest learnings. First, community is critical in impacting birth disparities. While interventions at the big S bureaucratic system level are important, community plays a critical role in the prevention of birth disparities, as well as ensuring that all of AIM's work remains relevant and responsive to community needs. The CATS and the Village Fund also helped to build the overall birth equity movement in LA County with many individuals who started out as CAT members, having moved since into leadership roles in organizations such as Planned Parenthood, the Department of Public Health, doula leadership organizations, and others. Second, Backbone Support is essential for the Community Action Teams to be able to realistically pursue regional systems change and provide real-time responsiveness to community priorities. Without Backbone Support, CATS are reliant on unpaid volunteer labor and the goodwill of partners to squeeze in CATS' work around their primary jobs and responsibilities with little support or continuity. Having a basic level of funding allows the CATS to build up organizational infrastructure that is critical for long-term sustainability and to pursue longer-term systems change priorities, such as those shared earlier related to workforce development, maternal mental health, linkage to culturally relevant resources, and crisis response. Additionally, work with the Community Action Teams has identified several unique integration opportunities with other First Five LA work, most notably alignment with the Best Start priorities. And lastly, we have learned that although CATS are working hard to move towards greater independence and sustainability, more time is needed for current efforts to reach their full impact. All right, and I will switch now to the Village Fund. So turning now to the Village Fund or Community Grant Making. Just to highlight some of the milestones, to date, the Village Fund has launched three cohorts, reaching 22 grantees total, with grant amounts, again, as I previously mentioned, ranging from $5,500 to $33,000. Grantees are selected using an equity-centered review process, which for newer cohorts has included prior year grantees on the review panels. In general, these projects focus on community-based prevention and supports tying back to the AIM framework of prevention and disrupting the pathway from toxic stress driven by persistent exposure to racism to health consequences on moms, for moms and babies. There are projects designed by Black-led organizations and individuals for Black families, meeting people where they're at in their communities. And just a few examples of awarded projects have included pre- and postnatal yoga and mindfulness resources, maternal wellness circles that incorporate the arts and healthy eating practices, educational tools and resources to reduce pregnancy and infant loss, and leadership and public advocacy training to aid parents in addressing instances of racism in the pregnancy and birthing process, to name just a few. As part of their participation in the program, Village Fund grantees also attend quarterly peer learning convenings and receive access to other professional and organizational development opportunities to grow their work, such as through conference presentations like a recent Maternal Mental Health Now panel featuring several Village Fund grantees. Lastly, LA Partnership has secured funding from non-First Five LA sources to conduct a supplemental evaluation of the Village Fund, providing a deeper dive into, into its activities and impacts. Results from this evaluation are also expected in June 2023, at the same time as the larger AIM eval. So some of the key learnings from the Village Fund include the importance of investing in community wisdom, and by that meaning recognizing that community members have creative solutions for how to support birth equity in their communities and can implement these solutions, given the time and support. Conversely, interventions not designed by community to often prove to be irrelevant and ultimately ineffective in achieving their aims. Second, we found that the Village Fund aligns closely with First Five LA's DEI commitments, and particularly our commitment to strengthening DEI and procurement. It's allowed our, the Village Fund and our partnership with LA Partnership has allowed First Five LA to co-invest in a large number of smaller Black-led organizations at relatively low cost per grant through reduced barriers to accessing funding. This provides critical funding for organizations to grow their work and also is an uncommon investment in innovative, community-driven solutions, providing space to test new ideas, in contrast with many funding opportunities which require programs to already be evidence-based or thoroughly tested, something which requires substantial resources to demonstrate and which may often be impossible, inaccessible for smaller organizations. So based on the learnings that we've shared with you today, as next steps, we intend to return them to the board in June for approval of an amendment to our strategic partnership with the LA Partnership for Early Childhood Investment. This amendment would extend the end date of our current agreement by one year to June 2024, as well as amend the budget in the amount of $450,000 to support both the CATS Backbone and Village Fund for an additional year. And I'll note that this budget, while it does seek to continue support, we did slightly decrease our contributions to each program in recognition of First Five LA's declining revenues and fiscal reality. To close, I'll emphasize that the community, for the Community Action Teams in particular, fiscal year 2324 is a critical infrastructure-building year. They're working very hard at strategic planning, fund development, data and evaluation, all while continuing to prioritize their core work of engaging with and directly supporting Black and African-American families. However, with the newest CAT Backbones onboarded as recently as January 2023, just a few months ago, more time is needed for these efforts to come to fruition. With that, I'll conclude. Thank you very much, commissioners, for your time, and we look forward to your questions and discussion.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for that presentation. And thank you for the important work you're doing. I had a question, and you mentioned it a couple of times. I know you're doing some data collection right now. You're expecting those results by June. So I'm wondering, how is that going to be kind of integrated in all you're doing and all the learnings that you're, you've already had? How is that going to be kind of coordinated?
Well, the findings that UCLA provides us, we will definitely take into account. As we're always meeting regularly to discuss, you know, different components of our programs and how they are delivered. And so the feedback around, for example, community building and interconnectedness and the structure of AIM, we are getting that feedback regularly. And so, and that's why our AIM Evaluation Team works really closely with our Strategic Planning Team, because our work aligns. So that feedback that we will get will contribute to our restructure, to, you know, revision of any bylaws or charters that we may need to do in order to strengthen our collaborative. Dr. Franklin, does she have anything?
I think that aligns well. The timing of it is great because of the strategic planning process that's underway and the evaluation not trailing that or being away from that. So that's one area. The other piece is there was a lot of listening to community members and others throughout our AIM network. And we want to hear, have we lived in our values of sharing power, sharing space, sharing resources, deferring to the community, engaging the community, and not doing kind of the checkbox thing? So that's the other piece that we're really interested in. And yes, of course, we want to find out if there is, are, is there value in interventions that we put forth to date? But really, how have we put them forth? And what do we need to change, adjust, do more of? And have we been good collaborative partners in the process?
Thank you.
Quick follow-up on that, if I may. I, I was unclear. Will the UCLA study focus on maternal morbidity as well, or primarily your infant mortality, infant morbidity work?
Yeah, I believe it's both morbidity and mortality.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner McBride.
I don't really have a question. I just want to thank you for the presentation. Even though I have been a part of the AIM CAT for a few years, I, this, I am a tiny part of the scope of work that's done by the incredible public, private, nonprofit partners who do this work daily. And so I just want to thank you for giving me a broader understanding of all of the work that's being done in Slasby, in the Slasby AIM CAT, but all the other CATS as well, across the garden. And I just, having firsthand experience, seeing the work and the effort that goes into putting together the events, doing the outreach, there is an element that's almost untouchable, that is one of the biggest challenges, and that's building trust in the Black community with community, generations of community members who have historically not trusted systems. And that's something that even in identifying the root causes of implicit and overt bias and structural racism, it's the educating of the community that you're not always going to see the structural racism. It's structural. It's not always visible. It's not always easily identifiable. And I've learned from attending many of the events where maybe that the turnout wasn't what we expected, but then having one-off conversations, it's because it's still a big part of this lift, the heavy lift of this work, is getting the, the actual community members to understand the need for these alternative methods of service, for things like centering or for a Black maternal health effort, or a Black birthing house, or even midwives and doulas, the basic understanding of those services and how they differ from traditional methods of giving birth. And so I just personally want to thank you. I was almost a statistic. I've shared my story with many in the, in the Slasby AIM CAT, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve in this capacity with you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Yes, Commissioner Allen.
Well, I, I don't have a question, but I thank my colleagues because we work very closely together on this. I, I did want to make a couple of points, one about evaluation, and that's, we know that the pandemic has taken a horrific toll on women in general, Black birthing people, women and birthing people in particular, partly as a result of, if people are not aware of this, the fact that COVID has, is particularly dangerous for pregnant people, that they, first of all, they're more vulnerable because during pregnancy, your immune system backs off, so that the mother doesn't reject the baby, the fetus. So you have a weakened immune system, and you have something, as the baby develops with pressing on the diaphragm and, you know, reducing lung capacity and so on. And you have, you know, an infection that largely infects the lungs. So we have seen increased mortality of Black women, of women in general, but particularly of those in communities who are most vulnerable because of COVID. And also where that skepticism that Commissioner McBride talked about plays out in not getting vaccinated. And, you know, I think people are particularly worried about that during pregnancy, even though they are actually at highest risk, because the women who died are women who are not vaccinated. It's completely tragic. That said, that's probably the smaller part of the impact of the pandemic, which has largely been in terms of stress, in terms of not going to medical care for chronic diseases that someone may have, in terms of reduced income, greater homelessness. I mean, all those things are predictors of both maternal and infant morbidity and potentially mortality. So we're going to have to think very hard about what the data means and how we sort out what's the result of COVID. And, and, you know, are, are we seeing any, is there any room to see positives from what we've been doing? And I think that's going to be a statistical challenge that people will feel all over the country. So, you know, I, I just, I don't want people to think like we've got it made, you know, it's, it, we have to take that context into account. The other thing I did want to say, though, that I, I think because the funding from First Five started for AIM in 2020, the relationship actually goes back to the very beginning of AIM, that this was intentionally set up in 2018 as a partnership of DPH and First Five. And that, that relationship, that thought partnership has been absolutely critical from the start, even when money was not, there was no money changing hands. But there was that relationship, and I want to honor that and, and thank First Five. I, I mean, that was really the beginning of all the other kinds of joint efforts that we've made since then, because I think we built a lot of mutual trust. Actually, First Five's initial contribution was Dr. Franklin's time, because she was working as a consultant to First Five then. And we jointly went after a grant that supported her involvement in the AIM Initiative at the very start. So thank you to First Five. And, you know, we hope this relationship continues into the future.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Sagala?
And the carryover with other groups of women of color is extremely important. My child was in it too. It's just, it gets like terribly important. When we take the data, obviously, there are different groups in the industry and different backgrounds. But to give women a voice in this area and to carry on in the research is extremely important. Historically, that's never been done. So, thank you so much. As we look at systemic issues, obviously, all women of color and all women of poverty are facing very different situations in birth than other families are often. So hopefully, we can take this data and really do some changes, not just in the Black community, but in the other communities that are there as well. So, thank you again.
Thank you. And case in point, you make an excellent point, the work around the doula motion, doula coverage for Medi-Cal, that largely came out of Black birth disparity and the advocacy of Black birth workers to finally see change at last on a policy level. And it is benefiting people of all races, all ethnicities, because that's the entire Medi-Cal population who are eligible to have doulas. So, well, well said. Thank you.
You certainly may, Commissioner. Go right ahead.
I'm really thrilled to hear that there's something being done. The very first meeting, when I was a Commissioner, this issue was raised. And I believe I was looking at the cause, and I believe my voice was that it was racism. And I would also like to know more, I don't need to know the answer today, about the African-American population and their faith in what, and belief and assurances in their community for their general health, in terms of where they're getting their general health. And, you know, my big advocacy, my advocacy is that we need more, a bigger effort to bring the best African-American doctors and nurses and, and, and health providers into those communities and they share an experience, that there is a confidence that there's, that they're interested in their well-being. And I think getting the information, the feedback from providers in, in, in certain parts of this county, whether it's in, in, in Compton or whether it's in High Desert, in terms of their confidence level, how do you feel about your general health? I think that we spoke recently about finding, even looking, trying to find an ethnically appropriate physician for a family, that was, it was very, very difficult to do that. And I'm, I would like to see an effort made. I know you were looking at my tremendous fear about, and as you know, about maternal deaths and morbidity surrounding childbirth. And that they were doing something is amazing, amazing, amazing. And, and, but there's other areas, as the kid gets a little older and, and the parents and the grandparents that we should also be looking at, and the confidence level that they have. And I'm very, very concerned about, as a physician, listening to people tell me, oh, it's good enough, Astrid. You know, when somebody says that, it's never good enough, right? So I think not just in their, in, in childbirth issues, but across the board, we need to be looking at ways that we attract the best and, and the brightest into our communities to demonstrate that, that it is racism that has caused this to be such a terrible legacy across, well, across county, but certainly across this country. So I want to thank you so much. I feel like, I feel encouraged in so many ways right now. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Just a few questions, if you know. Two of the slides talked about the strategies of the AIM Collective, and one of those strategies was early intervention. I was just wondering what those interventions were. Is it things that were discussed, like yoga circles and mindful exercises? Or is it, you know, something more clinical, like maybe the use of doulas? And then sort of a related thing, and Commissioners Hager and McBride touched on it. I was wondering if those interventions are welcomed by the mothers? Or if there's an issue with distrusting the system that's delivering them? And if there is, you know, a significant amount of distrust, if we have strategies to engage the community and, you know, accepting the interventions that are being offered?
You make an excellent point. I can start with the intervention of doulas that you mentioned. Tell you in terms of the AIM Doula Program, which are Black-trained doulas who provide support to Black families. We cannot create enough space at this point. We're always full. And so that really speaks volumes about the desire for it. Our colleague organization, Frontline Doulas, who are doulas of color themselves, the same. Right? They were tapped out in terms of the current programs that are underway, which is why a part of our board motion, thanks to the supervisors for calling out, how are we going to increase the workforce? In terms of other interventions, preconception health, interconception health, which is our campaign really to design to train providers to have respectful conversations that really center the person that you're speaking with, with the lens of addressing Black infant maternal mortality, not from a judgment lens, in order to support folks in being their healthiest before pregnancy. Home visitation is the intervention that we're working on improving uptake with Black families, hiring more Black home visitors, adjusting our approaches to ensure we're culturally aligned. As it comes to AIM Village Fund, they're good. You know, folks avail themselves of the Village Fund grantees. They're embedded in our communities, the community action teams, the Expecting Father Group, which provides support to dads with the lens of addressing Black infant maternal mortality and being advocates for their birthing person. So that part is, like, it's, we're good. It's more like as many as we can have, like the doulas, availability of the workforce, Black providers who are trained, who don't have a frame that's off, and also just mental health professionals that are culturally aligned and culturally respectful. And then finally, being able to have a healthcare system that isn't so, this is the big one, impacted, stressed out, overworked, overburdened, not enough folks, which is a Petri dish for implicit bias to take root. What we have impacted, definitely doulas, our fatherhood groups, the work of our community action teams, locking arms with each other as advocates in this work and just being a village of support in informal, informal ways. I hope that answers your question. If not, I'm happy to go deeper into any of the other, others that are called out.
No, that's great. But I also just want to, I mean, in addition to thanking the whole team, thank you for calling out the role of fathers in my other gig. We're really intentionally trying to look at the role of fathers and parenting children. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just add structurally, while we wait for the day where we have more African-American health providers, making sure that anyone who's involved in delivering a baby has gone through implicit bias training, which was required by state law, and far too many of them still have not. So that's another stopgap measure that we've got to make sure people follow the law that's on the books currently. Any other questions from Commissioners? Well, I'm very excited to share that we have public comment. How about that? We're going to, we've got both in-person and virtual. So we're going to start with the virtual. Lynda, you going to help me with that?
Yes, I'm going to start with a couple that were emailed, and then I'm going to go on to the virtual ones. So the first one is from Jonathan Wicks. The YWCA of San Gabriel Valley has been thrilled to support the AIM Initiative in Los Angeles County. As a backbone agency for the San Gabriel Valley AIM Community Action Team, we recognize the value of connecting the community with governmental leaders to drive systems change and manifest health equity for Black families and individuals. Funding one able the work to further develop, as there are so many great organizations and knowledgeable individuals that are poised to improve health outcomes within the San Gabriel Valley and Los Angeles County, respectively. The connections are here, the ideals are flowing, but without adequate financial support, the potential impact will not be achieved. YWCA of San Gabriel Valley is looking forward to the work and continued impact of the entire AIM Network. Our second emailed one is from Ebony Harvey from AIM Village Fund Grantee. Hi, I'm Ebony Harvey, Village Fund Grantee and member of the AIM community. I'm a registered nurse and birth doula servicing Los Angeles County. I serve as a member of the Maternal Mental Health Now Black Birth Workers Advisory Committee, local doula and lactation education specialists trained by Breastfeed LA. I also indirectly serve as a navigator by using my background expertise to help Black families navigate the challenges of the healthcare system. I see the future potential for First Five L.A. being a voice for the voiceless in birth equity work. The AIM Village Fund has played a significant role in providing funding to strengthen and support organizations in our communities who are dedicated to serving Black families. First Five L.A. has the potential to highlight these organizations and the work that they are doing in the communities. In addition, raising awareness around the intentional barriers implemented by the systems, which creates challenges for the organizations to provide services to our communities. Examples, barriers and rules created by hospitals hidden by the language, guidelines for doulas, which may create challenges to serving Black birthing people and their families during labor and childbirth. Also, removing lactation support from hospital systems located in underserved and underserviced area with a high percentage of Black infants who suffer disproportionately from higher infant mortality rates, which has been proven through research, are reduced by human milk. Organizations are doing the work, but the gatekeepers in the system are working even harder. Let's highlight the barriers that create challenges in birth equity work in L.A. And now we're going to move on to the virtual public comments. I'm going to begin with Jessica Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan, you do have the floor.
Good afternoon. My name is Jessica Sullivan. I'm the Executive Director of the African-American Leadership Organization, better known as ALO. We've been serving and supporting African-American community members of the San Fernando Valley for the last 15 years. Happily, we are now the official AIM Backbone Agency for SPA II, serving both the San Fernando and Santa Clarita Valleys. I speak here today on behalf of continuing the funding for AIM Backbone Agencies, as our role is fundamental in ensuring that African-American community member voices and needs are heard and that entities in place to help are equipped to create community member and culturally competent reflective solutions. Our communities are, need to be consistently served in order to truly address the many lanes of disparity contributing to maternal and infant deaths and to advocate for support of our region, regardless of us not having African-American community geo hubs or the same numbers as other L.A. County regions. We have a great many African-American community members in SPA II, and they deserve to be supported in preventing maternal and infant deaths. For even if it's 10 or 100 Black mommies and babies dying, it is certainly one too many. AIM and the Backbone Agency are effective in bringing the supportive programs needed to address this devastating reality our families face. But most importantly, our work contributes to families starting at surviving with an end result of thriving. Without consistent, dedicated and focused support of AIM and the Backbone Agencies, we know far too well that surviving and thriving will be so very out of reach for our Black mommies and babies. Thank you.
Up next is Ms. Casey Patterson. You have the floor.
Good afternoon, Madam Comis-, Madam Chair, Commissioners, First Five L.A. staff and partners, who are both in-person and joining us by Zoom. My name is Casey Patterson. I serve as the Senior Director for the L.A. Partnership for Early Childhood Investment. We have been partnering with AIM since 2009, and our role has been organizing philanthropic engagement in the initiative, which is just a fancy way of saying we've been doing a lot of fundraising. We raised over $4.1 million to date for the Village Fund, which started out as two budget line items, the community grant-making and the community action teams, but now includes 11 line items, including the community grant-making, which you've heard about today in the presentations. As you've heard, we've been able to fund 22 partners across three cohorts, providing funding that has ranged from $5,500 to $33,000 per year. We were able last year to provide a 10% inflation adjustment to each of those grants, recognizing that Black-led organizations suffer the brunt of structural underfunding and philanthropic dollars and that inflation disproportionately affects their bottom line. We have almost 20 funders who have been supporting the Village Fund, including public dollars from DPH and First Five L.A. And First Five's funding has provided critical seed funding to build infrastructure with the community action teams and the Village Fund community grant-making. And extending the funding will allow implementation to be sustained. So we have been proud to partner with First Five L.A., with the Department of Public Health and the host of community-based organizations who have been really our guides in this work. And we thank you for your ongoing investment.
Up next, Ms. Jennifer Roberson? Ms. Jennifer Roberson?
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Roberson, and I work for Breastfeed LA, a breast chest feeding advocacy organization based in Los Angeles County. We have worked closely with the AIM Community Action Teams and the Village Fund, especially in the South Region of Los Angeles since its inception. We are currently partnering with the South Bay, South L.A. Family-Centered Models of Care Work Group to implement the Breastfeeding Safe Spaces Campaign, where community members actively engage with business owners in South L.A. to encourage businesses to be breastfeeding-friendly environments for the public. Through AIM funding, Breastfeed LA was able to provide community members with scholarships to our Lactation Educator Program and our Lactation Consultant Course. Partnerships like these further the goal of diversifying the lactation workforce to support our community with culturally humble lactation care. Breastfeed LA also received a Village Fund grant to provide a breastfeeding support group, which centers Black families in Long Beach and surrounding areas. The support group is run by our Clinical Director, Aliyah Shadé, and myself, the program coordinator. By providing lactation support by community members for community members, we have built trust and a growing and thriving support group community. To date, we have served over 70 families through our support group and our lactation clinic that centers Black families. The work being done by the CATS, the Village Fund and AIM is essential for supporting pregnant and parenting families, connecting people around this important cause, and most importantly, saving lives of moms, birthing people and babies. As we all know, funding for maternal and child health is limited, and First Five L.A.'s investment in this important issue has and continues to make a real difference. Thank you so much for your time.
Up next, Ms. Nikia Fields?
Hello there. Thank you, everyone, for having me. It's such an honor to be listening in on all of the amazing outcomes of the AIM Initiative. My name is Nikia Fields. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I also have a focus and specialty on early childhood and working towards my endorsement in infant family and early childhood mental health services for the state. And I say all this to tell you because I think the AIM Initiative is amazing work, because what is impacting Black women and families most is toxic stress. And toxic stress from racism is impacting birth outcomes. And not only if women are depressed or anxious when they're pregnant, but even before they're pregnant in utero and postpartum, if they are not engaged in feeling trusting of their service providers, their community, or even trusting themselves and their thoughts and the community they're around, then it's really difficult for them to access healthcare that is already severely inaccessible because of systemic inequities. So having AIM as a resource to our tribe has been instrumental to my organization. Therapeutic Play Foundation, we are the backbone support of the Black Mental Health Task Force, and we have a lot of focus in our advocacy around infant and family mental health. AIM has allowed us to build the relationships with not only public systems like First Five L.A., Department of Public Health, Department of Mental Health, but they've given me as a leader access to other leaders who needed a tribe, who needed a safe space to do this really hard advocacy work, by putting us as community leaders in the front, by funding us, by allowing us to do programs like my program, Mommy Matters, or the Mommy Matters work that we're doing at the Black Maternal Health Center of Excellence, the maternity home we mentioned earlier in the presentation. The work is being done. If AIM disappeared, it would be a real hit. Please support. Thank you.
And that concludes our virtual public comments. Madam Chair, I'm handing this back to you.
Thank you very much. And we've got two members of the public who wish to provide testimony here in person. We'll start with Tavia Woolley, Executive Director of Backbone, who will be followed by Ajua Jones, AIM Outreach and Engagement Director.
Good afternoon. My name is Tavia Woolley, and I'm from the Anlo Valley. So I'm bringing that good
So I'm bringing that good Antelope Valley energy to you guys this afternoon. So I just want to share a little bit of context why I come to the work. Um, in 2007, my second son, I'm a mom of five, my second son died during the birthing process. And a few weeks after his funeral, I remember getting a survey, I don't know if it was from the state or from the county, asking about what happened. And as I sat on the floor, bawling my eyes out, um just trying to regroup, regroup from my experience, I sent it off hoping that something will come back. Tell me why. I didn't know that that why I never came. Um, but in February 2020, AIM came, and they came to the Antelope Valley. And in that room, um it was the first time I acknowledged my trauma and my experience, safe space. And so AIM created the platform for us in the Antelope Valley to be seen and heard. And so as serving as the backbone, um I have a partner in the impact, Kim Watson and Project Joy. We are doing the work in the community. I'm also a Village Fund recipient, and my program is focused on community advocacy and leadership. See, I'm here, that this is the work is working. I just want to share that the AIM Initiative and the support the First Five has given us and the AV has ignited momentum. The black community in the AV is feeling seen and heard, a community that is often overlooked. And the greater LA County arena is smiling, feeling like we're here, we're we're here to stay, and we're gonna do something. So I appreciate all the support of the AIM Initiative as well as First Five. And I just want to make sure when you think about that community voice, it it's right here. It's right here. We're here in present, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, um, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I really appreciate this opportunity. Um, in 2017, I had the vision to create the AIM Community Action Team model. And that was because I had been doing this work for over 30 years in LA County through Black Infant Health Program. And I had not seen a significant decrease in the rates of black infant mortality and then became maternal mortality and morbidity. So on tomorrow, I go and support the family of Bridget Coromer, and I've been working with Freddie, as well as Nija, the partner of April, and they have yet to receive justice. But they've yet to receive justice, but they've been receiving a lot of support from our community action team and members. And I don't know where they would be without that because they wouldn't have been able to advance to the place that they have been able to get the success that they're going to give for their daughters and their family. Freddie is a father of five now without support, and it was preventable. And that's the issue that we have to look at, not just the maternal deaths, but the morbidities. So in the community action teams, I heard a lot of questions being asked. The community action teams were created as a partnership between community and government to create interventions and strategies. And much of that, you have heard from many of our partners that were on the line, and even Tabia, who's here from AV. There's breast, black breastfeeding support, there's Black Maternal Health Week that was brought here with um Black Women for Wellness, and there's so much more that we're doing, and we're grateful for this partnership and support. And since it took over 400 years for us to get to this place, it will take many more years for us to address and really recruit and create some systemic overhaul and change to improve the lives of black families. So thank you, and I appreciate the support, and thank you to my colleagues for sharing.
Thank you. So glad we have the opportunity to hear um public comment to just add texture, I think, to the wonderful presentation we heard um from staff. Thank you all for the presentation. Appreciate it. This was uh information only and information we received. Thank you.
So next up is item number 11, which is a written report for informational purposes. But before I ask the Commissioners if they have any questions, I believe Dr. Bird has a statement he'd like to make. Dr. Bird?
Yes, Vice Chair. So I don't really need to discuss any of the items under um item 11, but I do want to disclose that I'm employed by the Department of Mental Health, as you are aware, which is party to the proposed agreement under item 11A. I currently receive a salary from DMH from my position as the Deputy Director over Prevention Services. Um, however, pursuant to non-interest exemption, provided in Government Code Section 1091.5A9, I do not have an interest in this proposed agreement with DMH that would disqualify me from participating in the agreement.
Thank you, Dr. Bird. Uh, with that, do any Commissioners have any questions uh on item 11 or any of the sub-items? All right. Hearing none, uh, this item is received and filed. And now I think we're gonna go on to item number 12, general public comment. Ms. Vod, do we have any public comment?
Yes, and before we do public, general public comments on item 12, I do want to confirm there are no public comments on item 11.
Thank you.
And now confirming there are no public comments on item 12.
No public comments on item 12.
That is correct.
All right, with that, I think uh item 13 is adjournment. Before I adjourn us, is there any other business uh I should consider, or any comments before we close? Hearing none, we are adjourned. I want to thank everybody for coming down. Thank folks for tuning in on the TV or whatever it is. Thank you. Bye-bye. Drive safe.